This study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, June 27, 2017 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Mr. Schluessner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Chair Workman?
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for 2.01, approval of the agenda. Mr. Munoz, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. High student achievement, 5.01, discipline data review. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to welcome Jackie Peterson, our unofficial executive director of elementary and secondary education. She's actually been filling that role already officially July 1. She would take over that role, but she's actually been working with us here the last few weeks, so we've asked her to attend this meeting. So, thank you and welcome Jackie. I'd also, before we get started, like to thank Carl and Carla and many of the other cabinet members. You all have very full-time jobs already and then we've taken on the role of data analysis and research and assessment and we don't have quite the big department that maybe Mayo Clinic has, but everybody's kind of chipped in and has been working on the information that we are presenting tonight. The data can be sliced and diced many ways. We hope what we present to you tonight is what you're looking for. I will share with you that as Carl and I and Offal lobby have been going around meeting with the various building leadership teams, we've even gone a step further than what we're presenting to you tonight. We've looked at individual classrooms and even within some of the classroom, looked at individual students. So, we are not sharing that with you tonight, but I do want to let you know that we have looked at this data even deeper than what we will present with you tonight. So, the goal tonight is to get through the information. If you could hold your questions until we're all done, that would probably, I think, work out the best and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Amy. I think Amy has the first slide.
All right. Let me click this for a minute. So, it's my job to begin with a little bit of grounding about the data that we're going to present. Some things to keep in mind as you listen, the human perspective, if you will, of the data. So, as we dig into numbers in just a little bit, a few things to keep in mind. First of all, knowing the complexity of this issue, you won't, I don't think, be surprised that we continue to see disproportionality in our data. And we'll show you where that's occurring at the different levels, the different schools. However, the root cause of that is very difficult to name for a complicated issue. We continue to work on that. There are multiple factors involved and we realize that. We consider that our job to keep digging into those multiple factors that will lead us to a better understanding of that root cause, but we don't claim to be there yet. I will tell you that not only in this district, but across the state and perhaps across the nation, we're seeing an upward trend in both intensive behaviors and in mental health needs. We know that there are some of those factors that play into this as well as the internal factors within our own district and our operations. We know that our individual students come with all kinds of different life experiences. In my program world, that might be pre-K experience or not having pre-K experience. In other worlds or other areas of the district, it comes in various ways and our job really is to understand each individual student, their needs, and have that drive the services and supports that surround those students. We want you to realize that this data analysis is an ongoing process. We continually look at this data and we do think it's important to keep in mind that a small number of students account for these large number of referrals. Carl will go into those numbers in detail. So, we don't say that to dismiss the issue by any means, but to realize sort of the scope of the issue that we're talking about. Also, we want you to think about that the referral process is a way to get additional adult support for a child when the support in the classroom is not getting us to the point where learning is succeeding. And so, not all referrals end up in a disciplinary action. So, while we will talk about referrals tonight, a referral is sort of a call for help, if you will, from the office to say, "We need some more support for what's going on here." So, kind of broaden that idea of referral for each child. And finally, we know, we've learned several things in the beginning of this effort, that we've been dealing with data for probably a year and a half with this process and have learned quite a few things about our internal operations. One of those is that our definitions of infractions have been loose and we've been working this summer especially and this spring to make those clearer, both for our staff and for our students and for our families. And you'll see a significantly different student handbook come forward this year that lays out clearer definitions of those behaviors to hopefully eliminate some of that, call it vagueness, that may have opened the door to some of the disproportionality. And so, we are working in that direction. We realize that the first time you implement anything, that it takes a while to get good at it. And so, we expect that that first year will bring lots of feedback on this new approach. And we've built a feedback tool into that handbook so that parents, teachers, students, community members can give us feedback on how that behavior handbook is working for them. And we'll go through another revision next spring as well. We found that the responses to behaviors have varied across the sites. So, the other thing that we've been working on is laying out responses tied to behaviors so that we know what is the acceptable response and to be more consistent with that. And then we know that the actual data collected in the entry has been less consistent than we want, so we're working on that area as well. So, please keep those things in mind as you listen to the numbers.
Well, good afternoon. My name's Carl Bach and I work in the Office of Human Resources and I'm going to share our data with you. Couple things before we start. This is preliminary data. There is some cleanup that needs to be done. So, we will, before we finalize our numbers in August, when we post our numbers, there'll be some duplicates, some other things that we'll clean up a little bit. I don't think you'll see much of a difference from what you see tonight, but there will be some cleanup that will need to be done over the summer. Another thing to keep in mind is that I'm using Excel and I'm rounding, so you might see things. If you don't see, if you see a cell, a bunch of cells that don't add up to 100%, it might round up, it might round down. So, please be aware of that. The other thing is there is hand calculations, there's transferring of data from others, so there could be an error in there. And if there is, please let me know that and we'll correct that for you. How this works is an office referral is entered at a building, it goes into our Skyward system and then all that information is compiled together. What we started doing last year is an idea to give principals more frequent looks at their data is that they are emailed a report from their building with all their discipline data for the week. And then the next week gets the entire year up to that point and just keeps getting a bigger and bigger report. I also get those reports, Offal lobby also gets those reports. So, what we do is we take that large Excel file and as you'll see, there's several thousand entries and then we manipulate it and try to put together these slides for you to give you some information tonight. This one kind of comes in one at a time because we didn't want to make it too busy. But if you look back at 1516, our final report there was that we had 14,215 referrals. Again, like Amy said, that doesn't mean there were 14,215 instances of discipline, it doesn't mean there were 14,215 students referred. That's how many referrals were sent to the offices in the district. Uh-oh. That always is great when it works. So, when we look at those numbers more, what we did is I asked Melissa Getch, she's our records and registration coordinator, supervisor, is we're looking at, there's 3,545 students that account for all those referrals. Thing is, those students are coming in and out throughout the year. So, what I asked her to do to give, I think, a more accurate picture is, Melissa, how many kids come and go during the entire year of 1516? I know enrollment is around 17,000, but if you take all the students that came and left during the year, we're up around 19,000 from 1516. So, if you take all those students who had a referral, it averaged right around four. So, of the students who had referrals, it averaged out four per student. But at the same time, we had 81.7% of the students who had zero referrals during the 1516 school year. Like Amy said when she was introducing this, we have evidence that shows that not a great number of students are accounting for most of the referrals, but if you take, what I did when I was looking at the Excel sheet is I put the students in order and I dragged down how many referrals the students had in order. And what I did, there isn't a magic number, I was kind of looking for that 50% number. But if you look at about 1.6% of that enrollment, 313 students had 10 or more referrals and that accounted for about 50% of the total referrals during 1516. So, now if we look at 1617, 12,325 referrals, 2785 students accounted for those referrals and there's about 19,553 that went through the system during the school year. Average number of referrals per student was 4.4. 85.8% of the students did not have any referrals. If we take about 1.4% of the students, 289 students that had 11 or more referrals, that accounted for about 51.8% of the referrals. So, that's an overall, starting looking at a district-wide perspective. If we look at discipline that resulted from office referrals and how we're defining discipline is if the student was removed from academic instruction for the reasons listed up there. Again, my print's a little small here. Might turn my little bit, might be ice on my, I'll look on the screen. So, if we look at the 5,424 of the 4,215, about 38.2% resulted in the following administrative removal, class removal, detention, in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. So, one of the things when we were looking at the data is, well, how many of these are actually resulting in removal from instruction? So, about 38.2% during 1516. We look at 1617, 4870 out of the 12,320, 39.5% resulted in those type of disciplinary We also looked at removals and this is one of the things that we report to the Office of Civil Rights, so we wanted to pull that data and get that to you as well. We did, even though we saved the breakdown by race for later in the report, we did pull this one, just to give you a snapshot of that. If we look at removals for out-of-school suspensions and administrative removals by the five areas, 1516, 1,066, 1617, 1314. The most common reasons for referrals, and this is pretty consistent as we look at buildings. If you look at 1516, it was insubordination, physical aggression, and classroom disruption. 1617, they flip-flopped, physical aggression and insubordination, and then classroom disruptions your third. Kind of an interesting fact is when you look at elementary schools almost without fail, physical aggression is the number one reason for referral. Once students get up into the secondary, that tends to be more insubordination. And then when we look at total referrals by level, oops, total referrals by level for 1617, you can see the breakdown there. The elementary has 49.8% of the referrals, middle school has 40.2% of the referrals and the high school has 10% of the referrals. So, what we wanted to do next is get you each building and I'll go through each of And just how, all these slides are formatted the same, so at the top, you're going to see 1516 and on the left column, you're going to see the total referrals and then you're going to see the referrals by race by percentage. And on the right column, you're going to see 1617 school year, it'll be the total referrals. Then again, we have percentage referrals by race, so you can make a comparison between those two school years. And what we included in the 1617 school year is an enrollment percentage by race, so you can compare year to year and then compare the referral rate to the enrollment percentage. And then what you'll see in the lower right-hand corner is pretty consistently, what we put there, I guess, very consistently is the number of referrals and the number of students that accounted for those referrals and then a range of referrals, which varies quite a bit. Oh, sorry. So, elementary school, one is our first school. You can see that, I don't know if you want me to go through and read each of these. I'll probably just highlight what's in the lower right-hand corner. If you have questions, you can certainly ask. You can see the enrollment breakdown on the right there, but if you look at that elementary school, 136 students accounted for those 459 referrals and the referrals ranged from 1 to 23. Are you able to see that in the back? If you look at elementary school number two, you'll see that 31 students accounted for those 43 referrals and the referral range was smaller, 1 to 4. Elementary school number three, you had 308 referrals that accounted for 2,746 referrals in that particular school and the referrals ranged from 1 to 170. Something notable about elementary school three, the average number of referrals per student, for students that had referrals was 8.9. Elementary school number four, 23 students accounted for the 41 referrals, another smaller range, 1 to 6. Elementary school number five, 27 students accounted for the 57 referrals and the referrals ranged from 1 to 9. For elementary school number six, you had 116 students that accounted for the 293 referrals and referrals ranged from 1 to 17. Elementary school number seven, you see 113 students that accounted for 497 referrals and the referrals ranged from 1 to 30. Something else notable about elementary school number seven, there were 15 students, if you take the 15 students with the most referrals from elementary school seven, they accounted for about 50% of the referrals. All those students had 10 referrals or more. Elementary school number eight, 72 students accounted for the 222 referrals and the referral range was 1 to 50. Leaving a little time in there so you can digest if you're looking at the other statistics there. Elementary school number nine, you had 16 students that accounted for the 84 referrals and the referrals numbers ranged from 1 to 22. Elementary school number 10, 18 students accounted for the 57 referrals and the referral range was 1 to 11. Am I giving you enough time on those slides? Elementary school 11, 84 students accounted for the 293 referrals and the referrals ranged Elementary school 12, you had 14 students that accounted for the 68 referrals and referrals ranged from 1 to 20. Something else notable about elementary school 12 is, in that school, two students actually accounted for half of their referrals and they were both students who received special ed services for emotional and behavioral needs. For elementary school 13, 22 students accounted for 87 referrals and the referrals ranged from 1 to 12. For elementary school 14, 21 students accounted for the 42 referrals and the referrals ranged For elementary school number 15, you had 64 students that accounted for the 157 referrals and that referral range was 1 to 14. For elementary school number 16, 169 students accounted for the 919 referrals and referrals ranged from 1 to 28. Again, just something else about, just to share about elementary school 16, you had 31 students with 11 or more referrals, which accounted for 58.6% of the referrals. Elementary school 17, you had 17 students that accounted for the 69 referrals and referrals ranged from 1 to 19. That's the end of our elementary schools. Our first middle school, 376 students accounted for the 2,720 referrals and referrals ranged from 1 to 77. Just another example, that student with 77 referrals is a student who received special ed services for emotional behavioral needs. If you take the 26 students with the highest number of referrals, they accounted for 972 or 35% of the referrals, 35.7, sorry. Middle school two, you had 55 students that accounted for 132 referrals and the referrals ranged from 1 to 9. For middle school number three, 381 students accounted for the 1,660 referrals and the referral range was 1 to 41. Kind of common theme, if you take those 29 students with the highest number of referrals, that accounted for 40% of the referrals and those students had between 15 and 41 referrals for middle school number three. Our last middle school, 136 students accounted for the 418 referrals and the referral range was 1 to 15. Finally, our high schools. High school number one, 121 students accounted for the 272 referrals and the referral range was 1 to 16. High school number two, 153 students accounted for 288 referrals and that referral range was 1 to 12. And our last high school, 326 students accounted for 664 referrals and that referral range was 1 to 27. Just another exam, it's not a slide in here, but another example of the number of referrals from a smaller number of students. If you take the top 10 students and the number of referrals they had, they accounted for 837 referrals and eight out of 10 of those were receiving services for special education, that's 7% of the total referrals. So, that's just another piece of information for you. So, after the buildings, what we tried to do then is pull together some slides that were disaggregated by race. So, if you look at our total referrals by race from 1516 to 1617, I'll just read those quickly for you. If you look at the 1516 school year, Native American, 97, Asian, 684, Hispanic, 2943, Black, 5282, White, 5659, for a total of 14,215 compared to 1617, you had, for Native American students, 196 referrals, Asian, 613, Hispanic, 2173, Black, 5166, White, 4177, for a total of 12,325. So, then if we break that into percentages, so this is the same number, I'm translating it into percentages and then on the right, you're going to see that's the percentage of enrollment. So, you see the slash, the left side of that is the percentage of referrals and then the right side is the total enrollment for the groups. So, if you look at 1516, Native American, it's .7% of the referrals, 1% of the enrollment. Asian, 4.8% of the referrals, 12% of the enrollment. Hispanic, 20.7% of the referrals, 9% of the enrollment. Black students, 37.2% of the referrals, 14% of the enrollment. And white students, 39.8% of the referrals and 64% of the enrollment. If you look at 1617, Native American students accounted for 1.6% of the referrals, staying at 1% of the enrollment. Asian students, 5% of the referrals, staying around 12% of the enrollment. Hispanic students, 17.6% of the enrollment. District enrollment jumps up a little bit to 10%. Students who are Black, 41.9% of the enrollment, 49.4, sorry, 41.9% of the referrals, 15% of the enrollment. And white students, 33.9% of the referrals and 63% of the enrollment. And for the final data slide, what we did is actually pulled a three-year trend. And if you can't read that, I'll try and read it with my, I don't have my glasses on, I'd be in trouble. If you take- If you take, if you look at our students who are enrolled as our Native American enrolled students over the three years, so moving from left to right, fourteen fifteen fifteen sixteen sixteen seventeen, they went one-twenty-five ninety-seven, one-ninety-six. Asian, eight-sixty-six, six-eighty-four, six-thirteen. Students who are Hispanic, twenty-three ninety-two, twenty-four ninety-three, twenty-one seventy-three. Students who are Black, fifty-six forty-nine, fifty-two eighty-two, fifty-one sixty-six. Students who are White, sixty-seven eighty, fifty-six fifty-nine, and forty-one seventy-seven. And then if you look at the three-year trend for a total fifteen eight twelve, fourteen to fifteen thirteen, or sorry, twelve three two five.
Okay, I'm gonna talk a bit about the action steps that have been taken from the fall of twenty fifteen until the end of this school year. We've had a partnership with the Midwest, Plains Equity Assistance Center, that used to be the Great Lakes Equity. That was, they actually serve as our expert, which is part of our OCR agreement. We have been working with them the last couple of years. We've trained our police liaison officers and the board's aware that we revised the agreement we have with the police department and really defined their roles in, within the district. We've had multiple staff development opportunities. We've had Dr. Holly work with leadership on culturally responsive classrooms. And we've had Mr. Simmons, historical trauma, non-verbal behavior strategies. That's the envoy training, I think, last board meeting I shared with you, the number of staff that have been trained in envoy so far. And then we've been having monthly meetings with the student school board and discuss student discipline at those monthly meetings. I've also shared with you that myself, Opalavi, and Carl have met with the individual building leadership teams and gone over their discipline data and started at the big level, working down by classroom, by, even within the classrooms, by student. And then we've worked with building administrators to receive input on standardizing the discipline practices, including removing vague reasons. And I'll talk a little more about that as far as the handbook. We've added a district discipline supervisor who is Opalavi. You're aware that we've added three equity specialists and the Native American liaison. And then we did establish, one of the things that we didn't have was a uniform form that everybody uses when they make a discipline referral. And ongoing work will continue with the staff development focusing on equity. I do know there's some envoy training going on this summer. And then, as I shared with you, I think at our last meeting, the back-to-school week. Any elementary or middle school teacher who has not been trained in envoy will be required to participate in two days of training during the back-to-school week. Culturally responsive classrooms, that's Dr. Holly. He has already come back and started working this year with the middle school, all the middle school teachers. Right now, we have a commitment firm for him for at least two of our half-day early dismissals. We're hoping to get the other two, that he's available on those dates. So he will come back and we'll have him working with teachers at both the elementary, high school, and middle school level. As I shared with you in our last board meeting, we spent a day working with building principals, assistant principals, and associate principals and really have revised our student discipline handbook. We've gotten away from the minors and majors. We have now is level one. And these are behaviors that will be handled by the classroom teacher. And then we've standardized what fits under a level-one behavior. And to be honest with you, have eliminated a lot of them, especially the ones that were really vague, like insubordination. And so we've identified what are level one and we've come up with clear definitions of what those are. And then in the handbook, you'll see, these are responses that teachers will use when a student displays one of the level-one behaviors. All of the level ones, the expectation is the teacher always has a one-on-one conversation with the student and provides a reteaching opportunity with that student before they do any of the other interventions that are listed under level one. And then we've also standardized level-two behaviors, which would be a office referral. Once again, we've reduced a lot of those options and have come up with clear definitions of what those are. And then have established, these are responses to these level-two behaviors that will be used by building administrators. And then we looked at out-of-school suspensions. And really, there's only three categories now that can be used for out-of-school suspensions. And we have those listed in the handbook. We've also have in the handbook, there are times where a level-one behavior could eventually become a level-two. And we've explained, I think there's three categories on how that happens. And then if a principal wants to suspend a student for anything that isn't one of those three, they have to call Jackie's office and get permission to do that. And we will be pretty tight on giving permission to do that if it is not one of the three categories. But we do believe there may be times where something doesn't fit under those three and may warrant an out-of-school suspension. But they do have to get clearance from the district office before that can happen. So that's kind of just a quick summary of what the new revised discipline handbook. We are in the process of, we've been working with our legal counsel and OCR backing forth on this. We think we now have it ready to go, to send to OCR for their approval. We anticipate, because we typically don't get a, what I would call a timely response back from OCR when we submit things, that it's most likely that we will already send the handbook to press and be using it next year. And then we'll take the feedback from OCR and any other feedback that we obtain to make changes for the following year. The plan is, once we have the handbook out and ready, we will host some opportunities, community opportunities for the community and parents to provide input and feedback on the handbook. We also are going to ask parents to sign off if they've read the handbook. They'll be required to, the last page in the handbook, they'll have to tear out and sign it to say that they've read the handbook. And then there'll be an opportunity for them there to provide input that way as well on the handbook. And then we will set up some type of electronic way for people to provide input to the handbook that way as well. So that's kind of the work we've done on the handbook. We will continue to have the discipline supervisor meeting with the building administrators to go over their discipline data, as Carl shared with you. The district does send out each school's data to them on a regular basis. And then the other thing that we did when we worked with the leadership a couple of weeks ago or a week ago, we are now gonna have consistent expectations for the implementation of PBIS. One of the things that we found is that some sites are using it very well and implementing it very well, and some are not. And so we've decided that we are gonna establish clear expectations on how things are implemented. We did share those with the leadership when we met with them. The handbook and those PBIS expectations will be shared with staff when they come back to school at the end of August. And then, as I said before, we are gonna provide opportunities for parents to provide input on the handbook. And then one of the things that we're currently in the process of hoping this will work out is we've been in contact with some individuals at Mayo Clinic who have an expertise in analyzing data. And preliminary conversations is that they are willing to work with us and provide this support in that area. So we will continue those conversations. We'll have to set up some type of contract with them so we can give them and they can have access to our data. But we're hoping that they'll be able to help us further analyze that information. So that's a real quick summary of the data, what we've done, what we plan to continue doing moving forward. I hope what you learned tonight was that it's a very small percentage of our kids that are contributing to this number. There's probably some people that have the perception that we have a whole bunch of kids just running wild in the schools, and that's not the case. It's really a very small percentage of students that are contributing to the information. One of the things that, I think some of you looking at your responses of the, one of the elementaries that ranged from whatever number to a hundred-and-seventy-one, I kind of saw some of your reactions. We do have a few students that have extremely high numbers. And in most cases, there's a reason for that. And Carl just shared a few examples, those kids have extreme mental health needs. And in some cases, they're identified for special ed services because of their behavior. And, you know, I shared with you that when Carl and I met and Opalavi met with schools, we even dug down to individual students. We had one student that was referred six times in one day. Well, maybe we probably sent him back a little too soon, because he got sent right back again. So it's things like that, that, you know, one student can contribute six times in one day. But when you just look at the numbers as the numbers, you don't get the entire story. But hopefully you saw that we're talking at a very small percentage. Yes, we did see improvements in overall referrals. But we did not see the gains in closing the gap that we would like to see. But as I think Amy mentioned, this is not a quick fix. It is not something that you can fix rather quickly. As I shared with you another time, we've done some really good training, but I can't say today that every teacher has had that training. And I've shared with you, it's extremely difficult to train fifteen-hundred teachers when really you have two full days of time without kids. So we are trying to be creative in trying to provide that training to them. So I'm not making excuses, but I think until we get all of our staff trained in this great training that we're exposing them to, I think it's gonna take a little time before we really start seeing a lot of gains in closing the gap that we have at this time. So at this time, we'll open it up for any questions that you may have. From this group.
Gary?
Would you be adding data, some of the kids that have, you know, maybe mental health issues or whatever, you're gonna be starting to add that information to the data?
Most of that should be in there, it's, it's-
It's hard to tell, I don't, it's not-
Oh, breaking on special-
Which reporting, I don't see a-
Breaking on special ed students?
Yeah, you referred to it in a couple of instances, but there's no, doesn't seem to be any listing of that in U-PY school. How many of the students?
Yeah, that's something the board would like us to do, we can do that.
I think anything we can parse that gets to, you know, it could be linked to cause, you know, to cause, you know, an actual cause. Not a perceived cause, but an actual cause that you could add to data would help just parse it that much more, I think. Kind of these other questions about those students versus other students and-
Yeah, we, we-
It'd be nice to know, just to finish, it'd be nice to know the mode. What is, what is the, what is the most often, you know, not referral, how many numbers, is it four times the most common referral? Six times the most common per student? What's the mode? Not the average, but the mode, what's the most, what's the most?
I can pull some of these things up now, but some of them I'd have to research. And when I pulled my Excel, I did not pull mode, I pulled average. I can tell you that-
Because it seems like there's a mode here, based on what you're saying, that the mode could be fairly significant.
I'd say the mode is gonna be one, the mode is gonna be one. Because that's the most common number. So if you look at a, if you look at a number, if you pull all the referrals for the students who have referrals, it goes one-one-one-one-one-one-one-one, and then you get up, and then at the end it spikes up. That's where you have that eighty-one-seventy. I think the highest number is one-seventy, then it jumps down to eighty. But then the vast majority of kids who have referrals, it's one. It's a, like that shaped curve.
But we can provide that, yeah. I guess what we were really careful of is we didn't, we just shared a couple of examples how an individual student, and then they just happen to be a student in special ed and we don't want the message to fly out, oh my gosh, it's all the special ed kids, because that's not the case. But for example, the one-seventy-one student that caught some of your reaction is a special ed student with behavior goals. And if I recall, right, he happens to be a student of color as well. So you have one student contributing to a hundred-and-seventy-one of a building's office referrals. Not that we're excusing his behavior for that many. But as we, we have a better understanding, that's why we look at individual kids. And not that we're giving him a pass because of that. But to expect him to behave the same way as a student that is not a special ed student, that does not have a behavior goal, is not realistic. So we're just, we're just trying to show you, these are some of the things that are behind the numbers that you can't automatically just read in when you see a number, because there's always-
That's why I asked, Chris, I think that's important to somehow get that in the data. Without, you know, as long as it doesn't get into individual, you know-
I can give you a real thirty-thousand-foot view of the, I just pulled, I have my pivot table here and I just pulled it up. Thirty percent of the referrals were for students who received special ed services, and were right around fifteen percent enrollment.
Fifty and a half percent. But I will say that we have to qualify that a little bit as well, because that's the total number that are receiving special ed services. They may be receiving special ed services for a speech and language impairment and not have a behavior goal at all. So I think we'd want to drill down to the students, as Mike said, that have a behavior goal that in their IEP, that that's what they're receiving.
Yeah, I appreciate that point of clarification, Carl, because it's also, may provide an opportunity to look at how students are referred and placed in. So I should like to begin with. But Amy, and I only call you out by name because you made the presentation on slide two. And there were three points I wanted to raise. One deals with bullet statement two, on slide two, what are the, what are the multiple factors involved? You alluded to that there are multiple factors involved. And so it would be useful to me as a board member, I'm sure for other board members as well, to know what those multiple factors are, so we can certainly support cabinet, staff, superintendent, and addressing and remedy. Can you offer or share what some of those multiple factors are?
Sure, I can start and others can add in. I think if you look at the behavior experience, the total experience from arriving at school to leaving school, and maybe even before and after, but within the school day, I think you have four points at which that disparity can occur, right? You have the behavior within the classroom, either by teacher or student or the relationship together. You've got the referral point.
...that student needs drive the services. Okay, so that brings me back to this question now. If we have identified these students, Carl, the 289 students who account for 51.8% of the referrals, are you able to, or is the district currently able to provide to us, the board, how those student needs are being, how those student needs are being addressed? To help alleviate our concern as board members, the community's concern in terms of what may be going on. I think that's useful information that will help move the conversation forward. Further, you know, there's that reference to intensive behaviors and mental health needs. To it, as we discussed the budget, the issue was raised in terms of what are we providing district-wise to help offset what is identified as a classroom behavioral deficit? And we were assured that that is occurring and perhaps, as Director Smith further has suggested, maybe in the future, in the presentation of information, we can differentiate between, rather than linking all students together as a whole, you know, dividing it out to where these are the students that we know have these multiple referrals because of their IEP that may say they're this or that. The majority of our student population falls into this category to at least allow us the opportunity to look, look at it through multiple lenses. And, but primarily, my question now becomes out of, again, as we relate to slide two, what has occurred to address identified inconsistencies? You know, that was referenced and identified as a bullet statement and acknowledgement that there are identified inconsistencies. So I'm more curious as to what is occurring. I know that there were some action items that were referenced, but can we with confidence say that just because professional development is occurring, or we have contracted with different agencies to come in and provide services to staff, that we're able to chart the staff improvement, classroom improvement? I'm just kind of curious how that is categorized.
I guess, I would ask the board to think about the request of wanting to dig down to individual teacher and then ask, now you're asking for, you want to know these individual students, so down at the student level now, what we're doing for, I guess we'd set a number, any student with over 10 referrals, you want us to bring to you what we're doing for each one of those students?
Well, if I understood you correctly, you had earlier mentioned that that information's already known and is provided.
Yeah, that's the information that we are having with the principals, right, and then having it with individual teachers. So the question is, is that where a school, is that where a governing school board should spend their time?
That was the question I was just gonna ask.
We can do that. We can bring you a list of 1,500 teachers and how many officers they have.
To the extent that it helps answer the question what, I think it's relevant. How and how and who's doing what, that's, that's over there. But the broad issue of what here, I think, you know, I think the board has, almost has an interest in that, I think we all do, and the community has an interest in that. So I know this is, you know, this gets, because I appreciate the fact we want to protect students, we want to protect staff, we want to protect everybody, you know, to the extent we can. But we also need to get data and information that allows us to truly understand the nature of the problem, knowing that there's multiple causations and, you know, in this case it might be this, this case it might be that, this case it might be the student, the student in the hall, this case it might be, you know, the, you know, something happened on a playground, who knows what, that, you know, that sparked this stuff. But I think to the extent that we can identify, you know, places where there are needs, I mean, I'm happy, if we, if we know it, then the question is, is what are we doing? And I'm hearing, I have full confidence that you're dealing with this on a building-by-building level, with the administrators and with those teachers that need extra help, I have confidence that you're doing that. But I think one thing that can give the community confidence is to know, you know, somehow we can parse the data in a way that shows where we are, where we've been, where we're going, and we should over time see these numbers, you know, you know, change. I know it's a kind of a balancing act for how far, how wide, how deep do you go? But I think we gotta go a little deeper than we are. That's, that's, that's the main point here. I think we gotta go a little deeper than where we are at this point.
Yeah, I would, if we bring that information, and if that's what the board wishes to do, we will. I would caution you that you don't jump to conclusions that one teacher, one year, if I have a, as a former teacher, some years your classes are a little bit better than others. And to judge me on one particular year out of my 12 years of teaching, probably is not very fair.
I'm not gonna judge the teacher.
Well, I-
That's your, that's your job. That's the staff's-
Well, that's what, that's what happens when you do, when you, when you do things like, I, I hope it doesn't happen, but my fear is that that will happen. And the other fear I have, Gary, to be honest with you, is the further you break down, and I was even very reluctant to give you the examples of the 171 young student who has a behavior goal. I don't want, I think what's the problem in our society is we want to pare it down and we want to put a blame on, it's the specialized kids with behavior goals, or it's this group, or it's that group. And my fear is that that's gonna happen. The further you request and break things down, are we, why are we doing that? And my fear is that somebody's gonna say, well, okay, we're gonna blame it all on those kids. And I don't, I just, I don't want that to happen.
I have an example from somebody one very helpful in understanding the data, though. You have to look at the data and understand.
And we're doing that, Mark. We're doing that.
Yeah, but the problem, the problem when you talk about society, the problem with society, data, data doesn't really matter to the average person anymore. It's only the belief systems that matter. What I believe matters. Facts, facts, information, data doesn't matter. If I believe this, it's what I believe to be true. And one way you fight that and resist that as an educational institution is to provide data and information that educates us and makes us all better because of it. I don't think that's, you know, I don't think we can, I appreciate, you know, what you're trying to avoid, but sometimes what happens, we work hard to avoid, what we end up is getting what we're trying to avoid.
And so, I think, and I don't know how the board will address the request in terms of providing clarification, but I would like to kind of move forward with raising a few other concerns I had. On slide five, I'm curious as to how many, the out-of-school suspensions result in how many missed days in school?
Chair, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Barlow, can, can we have some other voices heard at the table? We've covered a lot of ground here. I'm sorry, you just didn't-
Yeah, that's certainly the role of the chair to do that.
Well, in a study session, we do kind of jump in. I seen Ms. Becker's had her hand up several times, and I feel like you're-
The chair has that responsibility, but thank you, I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
I could get that data. That's probably something I can't pull right now, but that's something we can get out.
Ann?
Well, I was just gonna go back to, I mean, to adding just a little bit of clarity to the data that's provided for the elementary schools. I mean, you did, you know, I, I liked that it was 130, so just elementary school number one, just for example, you know, that there's 136 students for 459 referrals, and the number of referrals ranged from 123. But again, it's like, you know, that's helpful, but it's, would be more helpful if it was, you know, there's 10 that had, you know, from 10 to 23 referrals, or something like that. I mean, that just broke it down a little bit more. And then to the other point about where, where there are students, because it does make a difference when you're looking at the data. And you have a student who has, who has an IEP, and they're having behavior issues and that, I mean, that is, that is, you know, something in that student. And I, and, you know, we don't ever want to, you know, you know, talk about individual students, but looking at the data for that particular school, that is a big, that is a big number for that particular school. And, you know, to have one student and maybe, and maybe you could break it down that, you know, of the, and again, we'll just go back to elementary school number one, you know, of the, you know, 50 students, you know, 10 of them or 45 had IEPs or, or, you know, had something that, that would break it down just, you know, that would break it down just a little bit more. And I think you guys must have thought a little bit about that, because you did add a little bit more to the data for us. And, and that's all. Just again, you know, like, like some of the other board members have said, just giving us just a little bit more data and just breaking it down just a little bit further. And then I also want to say for staff, I, you said some staff request students to have a lot of, you know, students who have more challenges. But I think we also have to realize that there might be some staff that say, can I not? You know, can I, you know, maybe they're newer, maybe they're newer staff, maybe they're older staff, maybe they've got big things going on in their own life that they know are gonna be coming up in it, you know, during that school year. And I, I think if we're allowing staff to say, I would like more, I think we also need to allow staff to say, can I maybe have one of the easier years this year? You know, I'm, you know, maybe I'm, you know, maybe I'm going through divorce, maybe I have a new baby at home, maybe my parents are dying, maybe they're moving in with me, or, you know, maybe my kids are, are going off to school, or, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that happen in a lot of people's lives. And sometimes you're up for stuff, and sometimes you're like, okay, I've done that for 10 years, can I, can I just have a break?
I think that's a really interesting question, but on the other hand, I think it's also getting a little bit far.
No, and I'm not, and I'm not saying that that has anything to do with me as a board member. I'm just, I'm just adding, since, you know, since we talked about, I feel that we need to give staff, you know, the opportunity to say they want, you know, more challenging, but I think we also need to give them the opportunity to say, I can't do it this year.
So I have a question for, for the superintendent. So I would think this would be easier in elementary buildings, since you have self-contained classrooms all day long, is, does the principal make-
Class list?
Class list, so that it's like, okay, well, you've got Johnny and Sue and Fred and whoever, and they cannot be in the same class together because we know that terror will reign for the entire year. So I think there's probably some of that already going on. I would be very surprised to hear that teachers would say, I'm sorry, I don't want to have any of those behavior problems here.
It happens, it happens, I can confidently say, in each building, and not just the principal, but with the teachers that have just had the kids, making the best balance they can. And as a building principal, I would want to consider what a teacher said to me about their wishes, but in the end, it's what's best for the group of kids. So we try to spread needs out, we try to separate kids that might not work well together for whatever reason. And while I want to think we take personal needs into account from the teacher's standpoint, the bottom line is, it's really important to come up with that good mix of kids where they're gonna be successful together. I think then we create this balance, and then we, you know, some schools are more, have higher mobility than others, and we take in a whole lot of new kids over the summer that we don't know. And then we're learning about them as we go, and that can, can upset the balance, too.
Jeanne?
For the, the kids who get out-of-school suspensions, do you have a number or a percentage of those kids who just get sent home versus the number who are sent to a different facility where they really do get an educational experience for that day?
Yeah, this is the first year that we've had RASP classroom where, and it's an option we give parents, if the student is, I think that'd be suspended at least more than two days. And then we offer up to parents, if you would prefer, we can serve your student in this classroom versus being home, undetended to, whatever. We didn't get to a point where we required it. One of the things that we have had conversation about is changing that room to one of the options that a principal could use instead of suspension and require it, that instead of suspending your child, this is, we're gonna place him or her in this program, and it's not a parent, what do you think? It's, this is where your child's gonna go for two or three days versus using a suspension in that case. But this is the first year that we've had that program, and I think we started with fifth grade-
Middle and high school.
Middle and high school, and then we, towards the end of year, middle, elementary students, could you, we put a few fifth graders in there, so we did do that. But this is the first year that we've actually had an alternative for parents when their child gets suspended.
Was that, were those places in the same building, or on-
No, they're at the ESC building.
And the kids were transported there?
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what, what percentage of kids were suspended?
We can get that. We don't have that with us.
Was it received pretty well?
I think it's been a slow start, since it's a brand-new program, so we, we didn't have as many students attend RASP that we initially thought we might, which is one of the reasons why we dropped to fifth grade. We had a number of fifth graders that I think could have benefited from the program, so we added fifth grade. I think this coming year, we'll see a little bit more use, and as the superintendent said, we're going to make it a requirement. We also are looking at using RASP as that kind of a proactive approach, so that there's an educational academic component to it, but there's also a chance then to talk about, how did you get here? What's going on? How can we help? Let's address the issue of why you were suspended and work on that as well. So, you know, not as many this year, but I do think it'll be used more next year. Thank you.
We used it, we utilized RASP and had very good luck with it. It's very well organized. The teacher there is in communication with the classroom teachers, gathers work and makes sure that the student does work. I had a student go there for two days, and day one was kind of rocky, and day two, the student got tons of work done and came back ready to be part of, of the learning community back at school. Parents appreciated it.
Can we have, on slide five, can we have some definitions of the admin removal, classroom removal detention, ISS, OSS, just for the good of the class?
I'm gonna ask Jackie to help me with these, as she's a very recently acting building principal. I guess technically you still are.
A couple more days.
So admin removal, we did talk about that when we met with the principals that day. That is typically less than a full day of suspension, so a student can't get on track. It's, it's noon, it's 11 o'clock, and they're just gonna remove them for the remainder of the day. However, we do count that as a removal when we report to OCR. We don't use administrative removal as a reason not to report it, so we lump those two together. Typically, a suspension is gonna be more than a full day out. Class removal might be a short-term removal. We did, again, talk to the principals about this. Feel free to jump in when I'm the jackies. I think that's when, that student might be pulled out of class for 45 minutes or an hour, meet with the principal, maybe they go talk to a counselor, back they go. Detention is usually, that varies by the level, it could be lunch away from peers, so they might call it a lunch detention.
At elementary, it could be, it's probably missing recess, which is kind of a tough one, because most kids need that. And then sometimes parents were, in my experience, parents would be open to an after-school. And if parents were willing to do that, sometimes that has more meaning, because missing your own time.
And I would, in-school suspension is typically a longer term, you're gonna be down in the office for all day tomorrow because of something that happened with another student or a fight or what have you.
Thank you.
Gary, I did, while we're putting questions here, I did, I did pull your mode question in your, I actually pulled medium, too. So if, the mode is one, the medium is two on those referrals. So just really quick, if you, if you take all the, the number of referrals received by student, 1,263 had one, 503 had two, 245 had three, 138 had four, and so forth, and then at the other end, 170, one student had 170, 80, one student had 80, one had 86, 79.
So the medium's two?
Yes.
You know what, maybe that's something that you don't, maybe that, at the end of all the data, maybe that's, maybe, I don't know, maybe that's enough. You don't want to go any, any deeper than that. I mean, you know, because that makes it pretty clear that it's like one or, one or two times, I, for the most part, it's one or two. I don't, I don't know if you need that at another school, or-
And we did, and we did, at one time on the slide tab, 10 or more, and I think we had 20 or 20 or more. We did have some of that, and then we thought, gosh, that's just maybe too much information, but we did have that broken down even a little bit more as far as that.
I mean, I think that, that, I mean, because we're, I mean, because we want, you know, we want to look at the data and, and, you know, and make it meaningful and make it, you know, easier for someone to think about. And if you, I mean, if you see, you know, the, you know, 14,000, I mean, that's like, wow, that's a big number. But if it's like, well, you know, students have like one or two, and then there's just like this, you know, that, it's a big number that, you know, it's a relatively small group of students that has that big, big number. I mean, that, I mean, to me, that makes the data, that's like, okay, well, that makes, that makes a little bit more sense, 'cause, I mean, there are students that can have, you know, a bad day.
And that's where I was gonna go. So I think the presentation is better than it's been in the past, I like the format. But you talked about adding the additional data. We've discussed it in the past, you know, perhaps in the dependency, you know, you have a lot more, a lot more data that is analyzed. You know, if somebody wants to dig into some details, you know, it's provided kind of as, in an afterthought. You know, the summary that it is, I think is good. And I'd also add some definitions, like there's been questions around here of some of the definitions of the levels of referral. Well, I think the community probably wants that, too. You know, think of this as a I-know-nothing point of view, and help me educate the people who are reading it. I think that would go a long ways for the community as well. So it could be just handed off, understood if you want the details, to the level that's safely reportable, of course, it's, it's there.
Thank you. So under the 2016-17 data, slide seven, physical aggression, and Carl, you had mentioned that primarily that occurs at the, for the most part, elementary level.
Yeah, I think without fail, that is the number one reason for referral in the elementary. Maybe there's one elementary that that is not the case.
And hopefully, this is student against fellow student versus student against staff, or have you had any, I know there are some districts up north where, you know, students have acted out upon staff. Do we, have we had any experiences with that, or are you able to say?
We have both. In our system, it's broken down either on another student or on staff. So in, in Skyward, it is separated.
I guess my question would be, depending on how, how deep we want to, want to dig into this, how will that inform policy? What might we do different in our policies if we know, for example, Gary, you were asking about, you know, classroom, individual teachers, individual students? How might that affect what we do at a policy level? Because, you know, Mike mentioned it earlier, I mean, we are a governing policy board, and I think this information is helpful just in terms of being informed, but at some point, we have to really look at what are we as a board going to be doing with this information that would affect our policies, which would then also drive what the administration would be doing. It would drive what they would be doing, but not how they would be doing it. I think that's an important distinction to make. So maybe we could think about that for a few minutes or not, if you'd rather not.
Well, I think what Gary said, it's a good point. I think he was thinking more about the communication to the community. So I guess I would ask, what is the community gonna do with that? What's to their advantage to know that teacher A had twice as many referrals than any other teacher in the, I mean, to the, I get the communication part, but I always ask, then what? So what are they gonna do with that, that information? And if it's something that's gonna be valuable to them, no matter if it's governor's or not, then that's information we should provide to them. And I guess I'm personally struggling with what they're, what they can do with that information moving forward.
All right, one of them has taken away, like Farah said, you wouldn't necessarily have to do it by building, you could do it by elementary, middle, high. I think what it does, it just provides insight, insight to the community, you know, do, you know, because there's some who will just assume that there are people in the classroom that are just picking on this kid or this group of kids or that group. So we also want to dispel that as much as, as we can. If it's going on, we want to know it, and you want to eliminate it, both sides of that. So I think if you have that, and you say, in this case, with the case, and here's what's happened, here's the reasons why, because there's probably a reason why that's occurring one, one teacher, and that, what are some of the reasons that would, that would happen? I don't know that we would, we would find it. I don't know, we would find that that one or two or three would be a handful, that ever, maybe that, again, the median mode and all this stuff is just where we're gonna be, but without seeing it, I don't think we know.
So maybe that's the way to present it. I mean, just a range of how many each, 1,500 teacher, put them on a range of how many are done, one, all the way up to, whatever the total number, an individual teacher would have. I mean, that, I'm not a statistic kind of person like we are, Carl, but whatever you guys just called that. I mean, we can, we can create that, I think, from that.
I think we could pull that.
I just, like I said, caution that we don't read more into that than what it is. Even though it's been a long time since I've been in the classroom as a teacher, there are some years where I did send kids to the office, and there were many years that I didn't, I just handled it myself. And sometimes you get a few kids that, they need a break from you, and you need a break from them, and their behavior's disrupting the class, so they gotta go. And just, you know, I would, you know, it's all back to the, the example I used many times when, when we talked about student achievement data and teachers and, you know, would you want, as a professional, would you want to be judged on a one shot? On how well you are as a classroom manager, the year we're looking at you, you had a really bad class. And I, as a former elementary principal, I know sometimes, as Jackie said, you do your best to try to balance out the classroom, and sometimes you get it right, and sometimes you don't. And mid-year, you make some adjustments, move some kids around, but if I happen to be the year that I, the mix-up wasn't good, and that's the year you look at me and judge me on my classroom management, it's probably not a good representation of my overall classroom management.
But you are, I assume, the principal are assessing teachers every year on their classroom management.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, and you, you need to do that. We don't necessarily need to deal with that. Well, we're, you know, we're assuming that, like I said, I trust that you're dealing with all, all that. But I think the community, public wants to kind of know in their mind, you know, to eliminate some of these other things like that if we, if we can, if the data does that. I mean, the thing about data is, it is what it is. And sometimes you don't like what it tells us, and sometimes it's, it's uncomfortable to confront what it, what it tells us. But I think we all have to have the courage to do that. And I think to the extent that you, you can report it and you'll segregate the, disaggregate the data in a way that isn't maybe down to the school level, but identifies that and just, and over time, and understand that's a trend, maybe you don't even report that for the first year or two. Maybe you want to develop trend lines on that before you even report any of it, I don't know. I'll leave that to you to figure out. But I do think there's people in the community who kind of would like to, you know, know that information somewhat, if we can do it in a way that doesn't-
James?
Gary, I couldn't respect you more, but I don't understand what will be accomplished by knowing- by knowing that teacher A had five referrals and teacher B had fifty. So we could get that. And then what would we do with it as a board?
It's not what we do with it.
I want to know, and I'm, I'm confident that this is happening, that the building administrators in our administration is keenly aware of where referrals are coming from, of who in their staff is doing referrals and what the situations are. I want to know that this district continues to in-service all of our staff, that we can never get culturally competent enough, and that they keep doing the kind of equity work that we're, that they're doing. I want to know that. And Mr. Munoz has been given, been giving equity updates, what's going on in our schools. But beyond that, it's, it's like, you know, maybe we should have test scores by teacher, too. Other districts have done that, and it's a disaster. So, you know, my students are not scoring as well as the MCA tests is your students. Is that because I'm a lousy teacher? And I'll tell you...
No, it might be the opposite.
As, as a...
If we really measured them right, it might be the opposite. We might be able to prove the opposite.
I'm a great teacher, well, okay. But I can tell you, as a former teacher, sometimes you, you get those kids, and sometimes you ask for those kids. I want the kids who failed last semester. I want them in my class. And their test scores at the end of that next semester are not going to be brilliant. But it's not necessarily because of the teacher. I mean, we've got two things going on here. We, we have staff that were very concerned that they get the education, that they get better at doing what they're doing, that, that they keep getting better and more attuned and more culturally competent. But we're having an increasing number of kids coming in, too, who are dealing with toxic stress and violence and historical trauma and issues that we just have not seen before in the numbers that we're seeing now. And it feels like you either blame the staff or you blame the kids. And I'm thinking, we can't do either one. We need to know what's happening. We need to get the numbers. But drilling down to the individual instructor, I, I just can't see that there's any upside to that for the board.
Another thing that I was thinking about, too, is ultimately, when we're looking at data, what's the ultimate goal? The ultimate goal is to give the student the best possible education that we can. And, I mean, I'm sitting here looking at our mission statement. Our mission is to inspire, challenge, and empower all students, each student, with the knowledge and skills required to reach their full potential, to contribute to future generations and to become involved members of the global community. So I see that's where all of this data stuff needs to be going. And you have the information, and then it's up to the educators and the professionals to figure out, how do we use this data to get to there? And so it's nice maybe to have that information as a board, but I'm not sure that unless we're going to start telling how, telling them how they need to be doing their jobs. Maybe it's interesting information, but is it, 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 to what level do we actually have to dig down? How much do we need, information do we need to know? I mean, I think this was a really good start tonight. I think people had some great ideas, for example, of, okay, so you have one on one end and a hundred and seventy on the other, and what are some of those gradations in between? Can be helpful and interesting and useful for us to understand the issue and perhaps to actually do a decent job of communicating that to the public as well. But I think we need to be really, really careful in terms of, you know, what's, what's the ultimate goal with the data? Because if we're going to just collect data, just say we're collecting data, then it, to me, it seems to be a waste of time. It's what happens with the data after it's been collected. Anne.
I, so I, you know, I've been thinking about the, the teacher piece. And I think all the, all the data that, you know, that's collected, I think from my perspective, the really important people who have the data is, you know, is obviously you all and, you know, the individual teachers and the, you know, the principals in their own schools. And they're the ones that the data is going to mean the most to, and they're the ones who are the closest to being able to help try to fix the things that, in a student's life, that you can actually fix in a school setting. There's many things in a student's life that you can't, nor should we think we can. But I also think, and again, going with the thought that the important part of the data is for you guys, part of that data that I think you guys, you know, you either know about it anecdotally or not, but you, you do know how many referrals individual teachers do. So to me, that's the reason why that would be a potentially, that's, I mean, because that's part of, part of this data, too. I mean, it's a little bit different, and I don't, I mean, it, it gets at, at the issue maybe from a different perspective. I mean, because right now, all, all the data, all we're doing is just looking at the student and what is he or she doing to, you know, what behavior is he or she expressing to, you know, to get referrals. And, but there, like you said, there's multiple points where that can happen. There's multiple reasons why that can happen. And one of them happens to be the interaction with the staff, with the teacher. So should, should that be just part of it? I don't know. I, maybe, maybe it should be. And again, if, if not for what I'm going to do with the data, because I'm not going to really do anything with the data, other than look at it, but it's for you guys. I mean, it's for you guys to figure out. It's for you guys to be able to see, you know, what is going on with our staff? You know, are, are we, you know, creating the best staff that we can? Or do we need to have some other helps? Or what do we need, or whatever? And so that's why I think it might be important not to, not to put blame on teachers, not to do anything because their job, that's the thing that I have, that has become crystal clear since I've been on the board. I mean, the teacher's job is incredibly difficult, and I don't want to make it harder. But I think, you know, we just have to know.
Jennifer?
I think for me, the, the topic of the teacher data, for me, it's more important to know, and I'm not expecting an answer tonight, is, is how those conversations go at the building level. If you're sitting with a principal and you, you, someone rises to the top of having a lot of referrals, how is that conversation going forward? What kind of supports and learning opportunities is that teacher getting? And, and more than just saying, well, the principal has a conversation with them. Well, okay, I, I feel like that's not really enough, and I bet there's something more. So to me, it doesn't matter who the teacher is or how many referrals, it's what's, what's the pieces that are, we're using to support them? And then, you know, assumably, over time, we would have to do less and less of those because the teachers would be getting the support they need, whether that is, like Anne said, you know, some PD stuff, some classroom management stuff. And also, how does that tie into their teacher evaluation pieces, which I, I don't think we know very much about? And that system is what, two, three years new? Three? So, you know, are there pieces of their evaluation where that gets discussed as well? So for me, that's the more important piece, is how are we supporting our teachers who have challenging...
Yeah, let me see if this will help answer your question. The last part first, if I, there is a classroom management component of their evaluation. Start off with the conversations that Carl and I and Offlaw have had. We, I'm not going to tell you, we've gone over every teacher in every building. The data that stuck out to us, we'd say, tell me about so-and-so. And in some cases, it was, yeah, that teacher's on a, on a track three, or that teacher's on an improvement plan in classroom management. Or, you know what, of those sixty office referrals that that teacher has, two of the kids have fifty of those. So then our question was, well, tell me about, tell us about those two kids. So that's the conversation we had. And then if there's a, a, a classroom management issue in a building, the, then the principal's, okay, what kind of supports can I provide? That could be anywhere from hooking him up with the instructional coach, could be hooking him up with a behavior coach in the building. It could be, you know what, the instructional coach is going to come in and take your class, so you can go and observe Mrs. Smith's classroom, because she's just knocking classroom management out of the park. So you can see that. So it's a variety of, of supports that we try. And then eventually, if those aren't working, then you move further up, you know, you make it a formal documentation, you put them on a improvement plan to eventually become a track three. And then if they don't make progress, then you have grounds to, to, they're no longer working for the district. So, and a lot of stuff, those are just a few examples of how they support, but that's kind of how, how it works.
You know, I, I appreciate the discussion on, you know, the complexity of, you know, of, of what we report out sometimes can be, you know, really complex. But I, I, I just pondered the question. You know, we report data on student behavior. This is all data about student behavior. There's nothing about staff behavior. Is, it's fair, with, you know, we're required to report student behavior, but what, why not, why not be reporting some form? I don't know what form that is, how deep, how, why that goes, because you don't, you don't want to upset morale, you don't want, you know, you got to do this, you know, very, you know, constructive, constructive way. But I think the public would like to know that in some form, some fashion. I don't know how we do it, and I'll, again, how deep you go. But we always seem to have a reluctance to talk about, you know, staff, staff, because out of, just, I'm sure that's down nature, but we're, you know, we do students all the time. And I'm just saying, is that, is that really the way we should be doing it? Or should we be taking a more comprehensive approach, a system, more systemic approach to it, everybody in, in the system, including some way? I don't know the answer. I'm just pondering questions here. And I'm sure we'll hear from people in the crowd here and others on this discussion, which will be a good thing, because I think the more, the more discussion we have about these topics, at the end of the day, we all, we all benefit from it. I think the students benefit and the system will, will benefit from it, as long as we're willing to ask questions that maybe to some people are uncomfortable questions. We've got to be willing to, to face the uncomfortable as well as the comfortable. We're comfortable, we're comfortable reporting data on students, that's what I'm saying. We're not as comfortable reporting data on adults in the system.
So maybe we could do something similar to what we did with the students based on the school. So if we look at elementary school one, and there's four hundred and fifty-nine referrals, of those four hundred and fifty-nine referrals, they came from fifteen staff members, because I have to say, it's not always teachers making referrals.
Right.
Referrals come from administrators, et cetera. And then if there are ten staff that are making four hundred and fifty-nine referrals, they range from one referral to fifty referrals, looking at Carl, because I'm thinking, that at least would give, again, that kind of a similar look without pinpointing every single staff member.
But recognition's complexity of relationships, too. That's a relationship.
Well, I think, too, I mean, what, what I heard you saying earlier in terms of you're now, you've got rid of, what was the word? Level, no. Majors and minors, and you now have level one and level two. And it seems to me that those are being very, very well-defined, which is part of the problem to begin with.
Right.
Because this person over here referred Johnny because Johnny was chewing gum fifty times in the name, you know, versus a kid who's just really swinging from the lights. So there was a big disparity in terms of what a referral was defined as. So what I'm hearing tonight is, that's really been tightened up. I, I heard from one building principal who went through this long day, who said, it was a very long day, but it was so good. It was so worthwhile to be having these conversations. So as we pull, pull people in to sharing common language, common expectations, and it's all on paper, and everybody has, so to speak, their marching orders, then I think we will be seeing some changes, even in the, in the kinds of referrals that we have and the number of referrals that we're having, because there's consistency across, across the district. So I, I mean, I would expect in a year or two that maybe the reporting out might look very different from what we're seeing today.
And I think that's an extremely important point, too, because really, up until now, the changing numbers, we don't know why they changed. Now that we have consistency, good stuff.
You know, and then even to the point of, you know, if a principal is recommending a suspension, you know, and it doesn't fall into one of these three categories, then there's a conversation with the director of elementary and secondary education about, well, where, where do we go from here? And what is, what's the best thing we can do for this student this time? Anne.
I really like Carla's idea of having, you know, the student information and having the staff, I think, because it does kind of make it, I mean, it's like, okay, so it's like the same way you're looking at the data. And then I want to go back and reiterate what Mark said about having definitions. And I'm hoping if this is, are we going to have the handbook? You know, so, I mean, have the handbook, I mean, just an online version, you know, as part of the, you know, as part of this presentation, if we're going to, you know, go see it again. But then have a lot of the definitions, or will the handbook have the definitions of like level one, level two?
Yeah. The way, the way it's set up, it's, here's level one behaviors and, and responses, and then there's an appendix of definitions of those. And then you go to level twos and definitions of, of those behaviors. And like, as I said, not only did we work with legal counsel, but worked with building administrators to make sure, because they're the ones that are going to have to implement this information. So, and to be honest with you, it, it's probably, not that they're not engaged, but the most engaged I've seen that group. And we had them for an entire day, and they, they were really engaged, and they, they understand the importance of it. And I was really happy with the outcomes. And there was, there was a, the way we did it is, they broke out by levels, and then you had to come together, and any changes you made, we had to get consensus of the entire group before we made changes. And there was some really, really good dialogue going on, on things, and some changes that were recommended got approved and some did not. So I, I thought it was a, a great process, but we, eventually, we do plan to share the handbook with the board and talk, you know, I know it's hard to, if you're like me, a visual person, it's better to see it. You know, I tried to explain it, but until you see it in your hand, it's really hard to grasp what we're talking about. But we will do that in, in the future.
And then just one follow-up. Again, you know, as we're talking about, you know, students, we have, you know, we have this handbook of, you know, this is, you know, this is the behavior expectation for students, and this is what happens if they, you know, if they veer from that. So I think since some of us, again, have talked about staff, and so what, you know, what is the process? So it's not like the handbook for the staff, but, you know, so just exactly like the, what do you, what do you describe to us, Mike? That, you know, sometimes, you know, and it can be a narrative that, and I'm thinking, again, in the presentation, just to let, you know, like Mark said, let people coming in from ground zero say, okay, well, what does it mean if, you know, if I, you know, staff have so many referrals? Well, why do they have that many? And then there could be a spot that says, well, you know, there's, there's many reasons why staff have many referrals. You know, sometimes it's because they have, they have a class full of, you know, kids who have, you know, who have IEPs. And sometimes they have, you know, many students in their class that have, you know, behavior issues. You know, sometimes, you know, they're, they're not doing very good in their class management and classroom management. And what happens in those cases? Just so people have a better understanding of, of, so it's not that, you know, staff just, you know, sometimes they have a lot of referrals and sometimes they don't, because again, that's not really very mean. again, that's not really very meaningful. But if you add some context behind it, as to why some teachers may or may not, I think that would be helpful.
So you're thinking of a, like, an FAQ kind of thing?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, I think it'd be, it's like, if you say, X teachers had, had, had X number of referrals more than others, but, you know, a review of classroom management, you know, there's, there's no problem with classroom man, you know, overall classroom management, so that you're throwing, you know, put the balance, the balance in there, and then you talk about some of the reasons why, this one just seems to be, have more, more of occurrences, just by luck of the draw, or because they want the tougher students, or whatever that reason might be. But anything you can do to, like you say, put context and explain, I think, research is a public, hey, that you are managing, because I know what you're doing. I, I know that if you've got a teacher that's eventually, you know, not many classroom managers, you put them on the plan, and they don't cut it, you, they're not here anymore. I mean, there is, there is a point where that happens, I know that's going on. I don't, but I think it's communicating this in a way, in the context of what we're doing here, so the public gets a sense of, can see that. We see it, because, you know, we, the board gets a little more of that, I think, maybe than the public does in a whole, but anything we can do to put context to that, that would, you know, I think it'd go a long way to help our communication, so I'm just.
Carla, I have a question for you. So you mentioned earlier that it's not just teachers who refer students. Teachers can, parent professionals, I mean, administrators, obviously, I mean, who else? Does that pretty much cover it? I mean, like, a custodian, or a clerical worker, or the lunch lady, are you less likely to get referrals from them? And if so, have they also been, or will they also be trained as to what kinds of things they, they can refer for?
So here's, do the behavior handbook, I'll answer that second part first. All staff have to be trained in the behavior handbook. That happens at the beginning of the year, by the principal, they go through every single piece of it, just for that reason. So everybody knows all of those, the components. PBIS also has that built in, that the expectations are clearly defined for all staff in the building. I will defer a little bit to Jackie in terms of who makes referrals at every site. If a referral would come from a custodian, does that come typically to the principal? Or does that custodian actually have their name on the referral book?
I think one time in my four and a half years at Riverside, I had a written referral from a custodian, but they might tell you, you know, I saw this happen, versus writing something up and give you a bit of information. So I don't think you would see that particular staff member show up on a report, but they certainly would be informing you.
And the same thing would be for volunteers that are in schools. They, most likely, are going to tell the teacher that this is the behavior of the student, so then the teacher would be, one, making the referral. Obviously, our pairs, we have some behaviors that happen at recess, our pairs are supervising recess, our pairs do that as well. And, you know, one of the things that we learned in, in some sites, as we were looking at the data, it's like, man, this assistant principal's got the big percentage of their referrals, making referrals, while that's because they are the one entering the system. So we've since then have changed our practice that if you're the teacher making your referral, your name should show up on that form, not the assistant principal who's entering it into the system. So, kind of back to what you were saying, because of, the things are done a little bit differently in different sites, when you try to compare the data, it's probably not real valid, until we get to the point where we even talk to the leadership about having a consistent person who's responsible for entering it into the system, and even putting an expectation on the timeline, on when it happened and how soon it has to be put into the system, so we're consistent that way as well.
I was, I was just going to say the same thing, Mike. As I, going through here and looking at if I, if we pulled that information right now, some schools, and that's why we have the bottom bullet on the first page, is that consistency and everybody doing what they need to do to get their referrals in timely. Some buildings are going to look like this guy is making, or this gal is making eighty-five percent of the referrals, it's probably the assistant principal. Their name's going to be attached to them, so that's one of the other, like Mr. Mourinho said, is cleaning that up. You can't have any blanks in it, you can't, because there are times where, what was the, what was the action? It's blank. We've got to have these filled completely.
Do you anticipate, this is one thing we haven't really talked about specifically on the points to consider, the very first one, students of color continue to be referred disproportionately, and yes, there are multiple factors involved, but would you anticipate that this, the tightening up of the system will, would actually reduce some of that disproportionality? And if so, I mean, how will you know if, if we're reducing it with the goal eventually of eliminating it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. If I could say just that part is going to address the gap, I, to be honest, I think it's really the training that we're offering that's going to really get at that piece of it. What, we believe what we've done with the handbook and the expectations that we're putting on staff, is it's, now the data's going to, you can, you can count on the numbers, it really means something, because it's consistent across the system. And the other is, it's taking out that, in my building, I call it this, in my building, I call it this. Now, when we see this behavior, we're all calling it the same thing. And there are some behaviors that, for example, that were in level one, that went away because the administrator didn't feel we needed that category. And I, I just think it's going to clean up our numbers. It may address the gap a little, but I'm really thinking it's the training that we're doing is really going to get at the disparities.
Okay, so you're looking at, is, is those two being really, really linked?
Yeah.
Quick question on the handbook. You had mentioned that there's going to be community opportunities for learning more about the handbook. Could you talk a little bit more about what those opportunities are going to be? Do you know yet?
Well, community meetings, where we're going to just go over the handbook from page one to the end, explaining what level ones are, and what level twos are, and what can be suspended, how a level one becomes a level two. There's also information in there on our, how we use our police liaison officers, there's a little information on PBIS. So we're, we're going to go over everything that's in there, and then answer any questions that they have, and then provide opportunities for those to provide input or feedback on the document itself.
So, hey, I was bringing up a, to translation services, and handbooks for folks who, you know, this is, this is a new language, this is a new culture, this is a new country for them.
Yeah, we, just like whenever we do things like this, we rely heavily on our bilinguals to help, we even talked about having language-specific sessions, kind of like what we did with the World Cafe sessions, when we had strategic planning, we had, we had four language-specific conversations, facilitate, ran by our bilinguals, supported by district staff for that, and then we even talked about having, like, the first round of parent-teachers conferences, having computers set up where they can provide input at that time as well. Because as I said earlier, because OCR doesn't, and obviously, we're not the only district in the country that they're working with, their turnaround time is not as fast as we prefer it to be. So we know we're going to be running on the one that will print for next year, and then any changes that we get through these different opportunities will be in the eighteen, nineteen handbook.
Don?
Under action steps taken two thousand and fifteen through seventeen, train the police liaison officers and revise agreement with the city of Rochester. I recall that in the OCR report, a question was raised in terms of the role they played, and if they were utilized, and disciplinary actions and or efforts. I know that no longer is the case, but does RPS or RPD chart or track any information? I know, I'm just curious, is RPS currently chronicling any action or activity that the police liaison officers are involved with in public schools?
We do have to report any referrals to the police department, we have to report that. I think, not only the OCR, but do we send that to MDE or not?
I know we do, we have to, to OCR, yes, we collect that.
And any time that a referral is made to the police, that needs to be reported to Acolati, so that he knows the situation, knows a little bit more in depth about why that happened, and he keeps track of that. So there's a communication about that. In terms of what the police do with that, we, we don't, that information doesn't come back to us.
Deborah?
I have an observation and a question. On slide thirty-five, where we're talking about referrals by race, and in fifteen, sixteen, we had ninety-seven Native American referrals, and in sixteen, seventeen, we had a hundred and ninety-six. I think it's, I'm making an assumption that that is because we're identifying more Native American students that, through the work of Guthrie, because every other group went down, and so I just wondered if my assumption was correct. So if you have that, that would be great. And then also, just in terms of the identified ethnic groups, just clarifying question, that we're using what are federally identified groups? So we don't split out our Asian by, and we don't split out our Black students by, I'm just looking for some clarification of my assumptions.
Right now, we use the seven federally categories. There was recent legislation passed last year by, by the people in St. Paul, that in some categories, they further broke them down. We are waiting from, for MDE to give us interpretation of what that means. It was supposed to happen, I think, the next year that goes in place, I can't remember for sure, but I think it might be next year. But we're still waiting for MDE to give us guidance on that, because it's obviously going to be a little more challenged for us to, to do that. One, getting parents to, to do that in their registration information, and obviously, we'll have to change our registration form to further break down some of the subgroups. That was something that happened at the late hour, not this past session, the session before, that there was no conversation along the way about it, and then it got thrown in at the last minute, and it caught a lot of superintendents that I've talked to by surprise, not knowing that it was even on the table. We did, in February, when we met with our regional legislators here in southeast Minnesota, that, there's something we asked them, where, where is that, and why is that? And to be honest with you, I, I'm the one that asked them the question, why did that happen? Of the, probably twelve people we have on that panel, not one of them can tell us why, why it was done.
That could really complicate the reporting process, if they jump to fifteen, I've heard even more than fifteen different categories, that...
And I assume it's all self-reported, and there probably isn't a mechanism for multiple race choice?
One thing I wanted to comment on this early, you talked about some of the, some of the services and supports we have in place, especially for our students that have mental health needs, also some of our services for students on IEPs, and I do think that that's something that, that we could definitely provide, in terms of what we currently have in place. We continue to look at ways that we can add more services in our schools, and I know, Inspector, you brought it up at one of the meetings, about working with some partner organizations to bring that therapy into our schools. We currently are doing that. I believe we have seventeen therapists that are currently in our schools, not employed by us, employed by Zebra Valley or Fernburg, who provide that therapy in school. So it's just one of those things that we are constantly looking at, how can we improve those services for students and for their families to get those resources? So that's definitely something.
Well, and in Elmsted County, it's actually funding the one at the, what do we call that program now?
Wright-Fitts.
Wright-Fitts, at Riverside next year, so they're, they're paying for that therapist there, for that program.
Anne?
One other question on the consistent expectations of PBIS implementation and that. So, I mean, what have you, I mean, what have you found, so, on referrals, does it, I mean, how, how do referrals correlate to the consistent expectations or the implementation of PBIS? I mean, how are they connected? Are they connected? Are you, are you hoping that once everyone is really very consistent with how we're using PBIS, referrals should be going down? They should, I mean, just tell me more about that, the ongoing work with that.
Yeah, I can, I'll start, and I'll let the PBS expert over there jump in, but the research has shown across the country that schools that implement it with fidelity do see an improvement in student behavior.
Like a five percent, ten percent, fifty?
I don't know a number, but I can tell you, which was reaffirming for me, if you remember when we were at the National School Board Conference, I went to many of the equity sessions, and if not all, most of them talked about using PBIS as one of their...
Strategies.
Strategies that they were using, thank you, strategies that they were using to address the disparities. So, so I, that led me to believe that we're on the right track, but what we have to do is get everybody at the good implementation mode, instead of having people from one end to the other.
And the components of PBIS really are looking at positive proactive ways of approaching behavior. So if the school has clear expectations, that everybody knows, these are the expectations, and there's not a lot of them, usually it's three, and the language is consistent about those, everybody in the school knows those are the expectations, and then it's, it's using reteaching, just like we teach academics, we really need to teach behavior and reteach and reteach, so that's a huge component of PBIS, and then really looking at how do you positively support good behavior. When all those components are in place, and when people are accurately recording where the behavior occurs, again, who made the referral? What were the circumstances around that? The, the data piece of it gets in deep, dives deep into the components then that can help us look at, okay, what, what's going on here? Is it the location? Is it the time of day? Is it the teacher? Is it the student? Is it all of those things together? But the whole basis of PBIS is that you're really working on reteaching and using positive reinforcements to improve the, the good behavior, and that does, nationwide, has shown that that has a huge effect on referrals.
Carla, is, is there any particular level where PBS is more effective or most effective? I mean, do you have any data on that? Like, PBIS really, really, really works well for kindergarteners, but, you know, by the time you're seniors, maybe not so much.
I think that in terms of the data, I can't say that it's more effective at one level than the other, but it looks very different. So what you'll hear most often is elementary and middle, it's much easier to put into place, high school looks a little bit different. But it, but it is effective with our high schools as well.
And as, like you said, the key, the key part of it is the, the teaching and reteaching of the, the behavior, and one of, just an example, one of the new expectations we put on is that everybody teaches them at the beginning of the year, but we've added that whenever, like, when we come back from fall break, the expectation is that you reteach those, that when we come back from winter break, you're going to have to reteach those expectations again. So we built in times after kids are away and have to be, you know, because some kids, even one or two, even a weekend of going back in a different environment than coming back to school, that you have to reteach the expectation. But we built in throughout the year, after breaks, an expectation that we take time to reteach those behavior expectations to, to students. Okay, go ahead.
So I just wanted to circle back a little bit, as the chair mentioned earlier, about how this conversation affects what, what we do with governance and policy. And so my sort of, you know...
And so my sort of, you know, summing up question is, if you know the answer, maybe you don't. But what are our goals? What are we looking for? Are we looking for a percentage decrease, a number decrease, a type of infraction decrease? And maybe you don't have that right now, maybe that's an ongoing conversation. But to me, that's where I see that the board can, maybe that's part of our guidance and vision, but also where we can support and hold the district accountable. Because obviously, we say we want to see better numbers, but do we know what better means yet?
Here's my first reaction to that question, thinking big picture. The ultimate goal is we want to keep all students in the classroom. Because if they're not in the classroom, they're not learning. So if they're either being suspended or being removed for an hour, 45 minutes, or whatever, they're not getting any valuable instruction time. So for me, the ultimate goal is having more, if not all, of our kids being in the classroom all day, every day, so they can be instructed. So I know what OCR and probably the community is looking for is that we're closing that gap between our white students and our students of color. Which, if you're doing that big goal that I have, you're going to address that as well. But we, to be honest with you, have not set, like, we'd like to see a percent, this kind of percentage in that gap, closing at this time. I think really, getting the handbook done and the PBS stuff are, I think, are extremely important. And once you get everybody trained in the, the training that we think's really good and valuable, then I think we should probably look at what, what kind of goals do we want to set in these numbers that we want to, look to achieve. And I think maybe setting goals and numbers now may be a little premature. You know, you're expecting a teacher who hasn't had the privilege of working with Dr. Holly on culturally responsive classrooms, or hasn't been exposed to the historical trauma, or the envoy, and to expect them to make changes without having that in their toolbox probably is not very realistic. And that's why I've said numerous times that this is a marathon. It's not a sprint. If it was a sprint, somebody would have figured it out and would market it and sell it to many districts across the country and be extremely rich. So maybe we'll be that district that can do that, I don't know. Hopefully, we will.
I think that's a really important question and a really important discussion. And I'm hoping that down the road, we can set those kind of goals. And it would be to eliminate the disparity, the racial disparity, for that matter, the socioeconomic disparity in both discipline and the academics. Because I'm guessing that there is a real connection between many of the kids who are referred and their academic, academics as well. And I am also hoping that down the road, a referral means something different. I think as long as we're dealing with children, there's always going to be a time when they need a timeout. And so that when a student gets referred down the road, it's because he or she needs something at that moment that can't be provided in the classroom. And that every school has the ability to provide that on the spot for those kids. But I think we really do need to tie the discipline and the academic together. And as you said, come up with a goal. So that, you know, where a kid comes from, what a kid looks like will play no part in his or her ability to succeed.
Yes, I guess, you know, me, I like to know what, what's the expectation for us moving forward? We had a lot of different ideas tossed out by individual board members. So my question is, what would the board like us to? Additional information would you like us to provide? There were things about, mentioned about individual teachers. There were things about, what are we doing with individual students? We probably have to establish a, you know, is it a student who has 10 or more referrals? That's the information you want? Or do you want it for any student that's referred? What are we doing? And then there was a suggestion that, which we kind of have, but which we would have left it on there now, but we took it off. And talked about, you know, we broke it down. What if it was, how many kids had 10 or more? How many kids had 20 or more? We did have that on there, but then we thought the screen just looked like a bunch of numbers. So we, we did take that off, so that was suggested. Then there was a question about physical aggression. We do, in the system, we do have it separated between student, student and student to teacher. And then, can't read my own scribbles here. Something about an understanding of why some teachers may or may not refer students. Well, I think, then there was, I think there was a suggestion about how many teachers we have. Like, we could tell you how many teachers we have on track threes and how many are in a form, in the formal process of needing an improvement in classroom management. But what we wouldn't have at our fingertips would be that principal who's having that informal conversation with the teacher and helping them on their classroom management, maybe hooking them up with an instructional coach. It would take, we probably wouldn't have been able to get that until...